You're live.
Okay.
Recording.
Oh, nope, I need to record. Thank you. Thank you. I'll hit record. Now I'm recording.
All set?
Yeah, I'm all set. I don't know where Doc is, but.
Okay, seven o'clock. I'd like to call the guy in City Council meeting to order via Zoom. And the first thing we have will be the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I have the flag here in front of me. You all, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which it's.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice. Tonight, we're honored to have Reverend Richard Ginsman here. He's a very busy fellow. He's at Peace Lutheran, and he also is covering at Leesville Lutheran and also Trinity Lutheran. So we're glad you had time to come to our council meeting. Nice. Turn the interrogation over to Reverend Ginsman.
Okay, thank you, Carl. What a privilege it is to be a part of your, your meeting here tonight. And I do invite you to join me in prayer. Loving God, we thank you for your goodness and kindness that you give to us for your many blessings that you bestowed upon us. As we are entering this election cycle, we are so grateful for this country and the freedoms that we enjoy. And for this community in which we are so privileged to live in. Lord, we, we lift up to you those who serve and protect our liberties. For those who are in law enforcement, for firefighters, for our first responders, for those who are serving in the military. We ask that you would guard and protect them as they go about their very important work. Tonight, Lord, we also pray for those who serve in our local government, who are willing to give of their time and talents to serve in such an important way. We pray for our mayor and all those serving on the Galleon City Council. We pray that you would give them wisdom to govern wisely, that you would give them a desire to do what is just and right. And that you would give them the ability to work together even when there might be disagreement among themselves. Tonight, Lord, we say a special prayer for those suffering from the COVID-19 virus. Hear their cry for healing and reveal your presence in the midst of this pandemic. Comfort those who have lost loved ones. We now pray for the agenda set before the city council tonight. Bless the council and their deliberations and decisions. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. You're welcome to stay on. I'm not sure you have other things to do, but thank you for being with us tonight. Okay?
I will stay on. Yeah, thank you for the invitation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll have roll call council members.
Mr. Baldinger.
Here.
Mr. Bodkins.
Here.
Ms. Earlston.
Here.
Dr. Felner.
Here.
Mr. Ivy.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Triplett.
Here.
Let me note that all seven council members are present for the Zoom meeting. Next is roll call of elected officials and safety service director.
Mayor Larry. Auditor Trish. Law, Director of Law Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks. Safety Service Director Ward.
Here.
Okay, while we're here, Chris Bryant, did Mr. Trish get out of the hospital today? Julie, do you know or anybody know?
I do not know.
I'd heard he was supposed to get out today, so it's supposed to be rest for a week. Mary, did you hear?
Excuse me, I got a text early this morning saying that he was going to be released today and would be out for a week. And, and, and wasn't, you know, wasn't going to attend the meeting.
We need to keep, keep him in our thoughts and prayers also for a quick recovery.
I would agree.
Next, evolve, received a copy of the September 22nd council meetings. Do you have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the September 22nd, 2020 regular meeting.
Okay, we have a second, Mr. Bodkins. Whether you need additions or corrections? If not all in favor, say aye.
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 Those likewise, the minutes of September 22nd has been approved as presented. Moving on, we have several, several ordinances as noted on your agendas. That's be added to the agenda. The first one is 2020 day 62. Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make that motion to add ordinance for 2020 dash 62 to the agenda for tonight.
Mr. Richard made the motions. We have a second. Mr. Ivy, Mr. Ivy seconded it. Roll call.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy. Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
The ordinance 2020 day 62 has been added to the agenda by seven oh vote. Next is 2020 day 66. Your motion to add that.
I'll make the motion to add ordinance number 2020 day 66 to the, to the agenda tonight.
Mr. Baldinger read the motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Triplett seconded it. Roll call.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
The ordinance 2020 day 66 been added to the agenda by seven oh vote. The next one is ordinance or resolution 2020 dash 14. Do I hear a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'd like to add resolution 2020 dash 14 to tonight's agenda.
Mr. Richard made the motion, second by Mr. Ivy. Roll call.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Resolution 2020 dash 14 has been added to the agenda by seven oh vote. Now do I hear a motion to prove the agenda as, as amended?
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Dr. Felner's made the motion, second by Mr. Triplett. A discussion, roll call. They're all in favor, I guess we do on this, but all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passed. Moving on to, moving on to the agenda then, the first, first is ordinance 57 is the first reading.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 57 entitled ordinance adopting the recommendation of the City of Galleon Planning Commission and rezoning part of Outlet 714, also known as parcels 19 dash 0025904 dash 00 from residential office to general commercial.
Okay, who would like to take that for discussion? Let's hope for a discussion.
Mr. President, this came through law ordinance originally. This meeting September, September 22nd, we had the public hearing for this. What this is, is the follow-up ordinance to rezone that outlot for the Mill Creek Development, the 40-bed facility that they're planning on building out there. And if anybody else has anything, I, I just like, I think this is definitely a win-win for our community.
Any other comments on this discussion?
I, I agree with Mr. Richard. I think that the facility is needed in the area. We need housing for all ages and to have a assisted care facility on, another one in town. Definitely an added bonus. So with that in mind, I would like to make a motion to proceed to the final reading and suspend the rules on ordinance 2020 dash 57.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Felner to spend the rules on this ordinance, second by Mr. Baldinger. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Your triplett.
Yes.
Well, she spent the rules passed by seven oh vote. No discussion on the ordinance. A discussion?
Does anyone just have a rough idea of, of a timeline for construction? I know this is one step of many before, you know, things go up. But does, does anybody have a timeline that was presented?
I don't, I can't see Julie if Eric is, excuse me, Eric is on.
No, I don't see Eric.
I'll take a swing at it. I think why this is important to move ahead tonight and it's, you know, it's the right move to suspend the rules is they'd like to get some of the site work done yet before the, you know, weather change.
Okay.
And is that they would begin construction as soon as they could, 2021.
Great.
With completion in the fall.
Thank you.
President, I do, I think I recall when he was giving a presentation at last council meeting that he did mention in passing that within the year is what his goals were, 2021. So I thought I heard that.
Mr. Triplett?
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2020 dash 57.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, second by Mr. Bodkins. If really discuss. If none, roll call.
Mr. Trip.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Your Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Okay, passed by seven oh vote. Moving on to the next ordinance, 2020 dash 62, first reading.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 62, ordinance authorizing the safety service director to apply for and accept a law enforcement body armor grant made available through the Ohio Attorney General and declaring an emergency.
Heard the ordinance discussion.
Ms. Ward, could you elaborate?
Sure, this is the same grant that the chief has applied for before. This is to be used for body armor. I think his plan is to actually use the body armor to outfit the three new officers.
And have we been granted the grant in the past?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions, discussion? Mayor, do you have any comments on this?
I don't know what that was, but I think it's, you know, it's pretty routine. And, you know, we have these three, you know, new officers, so I think that's all good.
That was my Hungarian voice telling us of the time, so. We have little language session here. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and go to the final reading on ordinance 2020 dash 62.
Heard a motion by Dr. Felner to spend the rules on this ordinance, second by Mr. Bodkins. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Well, she spent the rules passed by seven oh vote. No discussion on the ordinance. If really discussion, Mr. Triplett?
He's.
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2020 day 62. Sorry about that.
If Reverend made the motion to pass this ordinance, second by Mr. Bodkins. Discussion? If none, roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
It passed by seven oh vote also. And moving on to the next ordinance is 2020 day 63 as the first reading.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 63 entitled ordinance amending section one of ordinance number 2017 dash 40 as amended regarding the number of authorized classification in each city department and declaring an emergency.
Okay, discussion on this ordinance?
Mr. President, this came through law ordinances, but I'm going to defer to Ms. Ward. If she could explain it, it's, it's pretty simple.
Yep, this is just updating the old ordinance list to maintenance labors and the water filtration department. That department actually doesn't have maintenance laborers. What they do have or should have is a maintenance mechanic. So we're just asking that, that be updated and add that position to that department so we can fill it.
Are we eliminating the aforementioned positions?
I suppose technically we're, we're eliminating them, but just replacing it. Did we leave one in Julie? No. So yes, those are going out of that department.
Thank you.
Mrs. Earlston?
Is this a, just a change in name and, or is there any other changes like in pay or anything like that?
No, it's same pay range, Timmy. I think what happened is this ordinance was kind of reconfigured back in 2013 originally, I think. And when it, that was done, I, we hadn't sorted out all the service departments. And so I think that's how this thing is a little bit weird and doesn't really align with the positions that are actually in the department. So we're just trying to correct that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Triplett?
Yeah, you also had a change in the street department, just name though.
Oh, yes. Changing the service department supervisor to superintendent to basically reflect the same title as all of the other department heads. Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
I'm sure Andy thanks you too.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got one here, another one for Nikki. In the electric line department there, there's an asterisk here behind the six line maintenance. What does that asterisk for?
If you. It just has to, has to do with the number of apprentices we can have. So six total, including the journeyman and apprentices.
Okay, it says to see the ASME contract. Okay.
And the US Department of Labor, that's the, the entity that dictates that.
Okay, thanks.
Probably some urgency on do you make this change?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules so that on ordinance 2020 dash 63, so that we can keep current, this is kind of a keeping up with the change that occurred when we went from city manager to the, the mayor and reflecting reflecting reality as it is. So I'd like to make that motion.
Heard the motion by Dr. Felner to spend the rules, second by Mr. Bodkins. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Your triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
It passed by seven oh votes, spend the rules. Now back to the ordinance discussion. Mr. Triplett?
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2020 day 63.
Okay, motion, Mr. Triplett, we have a second. Mr. Ivy seconded it. Discussion? If none, roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Or it is passed by seven oh vote, this motion. Moving on to ordinance 2020 day 66 as the first reading.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 66 entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to accept certain easements positions of property relating to 10 parcels to the state route 598 widening project to execute any and all documents relating thereto and to pay the owner of said parcels the negotiated amounts for the acquisition of said property rights and declaring an emergency.
Open up for discussion of either Mr. Palmer or the mayor.
Actually, Carl, I think Thomas is probably the, the most knowledgeable one on the need for and what the ordinance would do, need for the ordinance and what it would do.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, happy to answer that. The, the ordinance that you have before you is basically the same set of properties of a resolution that you passed earlier. These are the first properties on which easements are going to be acquired for the 598 widening project. You passed the notice that would be given to those property owners at a previous council meeting. Natasha then sent out those notices out to those property owners. And she received all of them back. So we're now able to pass the ordinance that will actually effectuate the appropriation. This is a thing that allows us to acquire these pieces of property for the project and also to pay the property owners for them.
Mr. Triplett?
How'd we come up with the prices, Thomas?
That was done by our, an outside entity that we have contracted with for that purpose. I think that's the best answer on this. As you can see on this, none of them are very large in terms of properties in terms of acreage, and the prices on here are extremely minimal, most of them being $300.
Carl, if I just amplify and maybe help add a little bit to it, there, there are really three entities involved. We have the designer, GPD, who's designing the road. They've hired OR Colon, who has done real estate acquisition in the past. They're the ones doing the, the transacting. The value, your question, was determined by a gentleman out of Norwalk. His last name is Kirk. And that, under the federal acquisition process, you have to have an independent appraisal. That was Kirk. He handed those appraisals to OR Colon, and they began this process of negotiating with their neighbors. So that's, and I wish I could, Eric Kirk, I believe is his name.
Yep.
Out of walk. So he's a sub, he's a subcontractor of a subcontractor, but it's kind of how the process works.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes, sir.
Um, the, this ordinance relates to 10 parcels. Are there more parcels?
Yes.
Future?
Yes, there are a total of 30 parcels.
Okay.
Julie, is that number correct?
No, there's actually, there's 25 that was a part of the outside of the, or inside the state limits.
Inside.
And then there's 10 that are outside the state.
Okay, 35. Okay. Okay, 35, not 30. But no, there's more, there'll be more coming. In fact, the next item on your agenda is a resolution which will deal with more of those properties.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Other questions?
Yeah, this, this temporary easement on here, this just allows the, the contractors to, to use property during construction. Then it goes back.
Correct. Correct. That's absolutely correct, although you will note on here at least once says permanent easement. That's, that, that will be a permanent take of property or acquisition is a better word.
Yeah. Okay, so that'll be a permanent. Okay.
Any other questions? Is time of the essence here, Mr. Palmer?
I, I would say as we, absolutely, I would say as the, this process goes, that we need to do it in a timely way. There is a, there is a, oh, dot, it does have a timeframe associated with this. So, yeah, I think it is something we'd like to get moving along.
So based on that statement by Mr. Palmer, I would like to, if, if there are no other questions, move ordinance 2020 dash 66 to the final reading.
Heard the motion by Dr. Felner. Do we have a second? Mrs. Earlston, second of the motion. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Your triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
The motion is spend the rules passed by seven oh vote. Any further discussion on the ordinance?
I have one.
Mr. Bodkins?
I was just curious, as, as we proceed here and acquire this property and make the payments and so forth, does that give the state the opportunity to get in and get a head start on this and do any work with that property? Or they wait till they acquire all of it?
It's more the latter than the former, but back to Doc Felner's question about the, is there a reason to get going? Yeah, there's a, we need to certify that we have all of the right of way. We being the project, the city. And I believe it's by the end of January. What accomplishes what you're asking about is if we stay on schedule, the state will sell this project in early July. Award it maybe towards the end of July, something like that. And a lot of the, what we're hoping is a lot of the drainage work. And some of the temporary pavement could get accomplished in 2021. And then the, the, the challenge, I guess. It's going to be a big project, but that, most of the new construction will be done then in '22. So if we were to tumble, if we didn't get the right of way secured, it would fall later into '21. And they get, they get lessons of the project accomplished then.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Triplett?
I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution 2020 day 66.
It's ordinance.
Ordinance, sorry.
Or this, Mr. Triplett made the motion, second by Mr. Bodkins. Roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Sure. Mr. Richard.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hear my name.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Okay, it passed by seven oh vote also. Now, next, the last piece of legislation is resolution 2020 day 14 and held to a single reading. Julie?
Resolution number 2020 dash 14 entitled a resolution declaring the necessity and intention of the city to appropriate fee simple interest and temporary construction easements for 10 parcels for the purpose of state route 598 widening and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading, the resolution discussion. Follow up the previous ordinance?
This is associated with this, with the previous ordinance to the extent that this is an additional 10 properties. This is what council passed some weeks ago in terms of the, of the 10 acquisitions you just approved. This is the notice that goes out to these additional 10 property owners. It will be mailed to them and then they, they respond. And then you'll see these same 10 properties come back in ordinance. same ten properties come back in ordinance form for you to pass for the acquisition.
Okay, Mr. Triplett.
Just a question on this, since that's such a wide right away, are these temporary easements so they can maintain traffic?
Mark, that's a good question and the the short answer is yes. And also the permanent takes out north, north towards Brant Road, those are acquisitions. There's a probably the the two largest ones are are both construction easements and some acquisition. They'll be at third lane added in and some widening at the intersection, so that's where some of the permanent takes, I I would without screwing up too bad, I would say most of all the permanent takes are out there in and around the Brant Road intersection.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Palmer, I see on the heading that this is the parcels that are outside the city limits, is this all of the parcels or are there gonna be a few other? Sorry for my voice.
You will, you will have a resolution coming with additional parcels. Julie, I don't know, ever, have you been able to get that together yet, you anticipate that being done in for two weeks from now?
A resolu, you mean the ordinance or resolution?
Well, the resolution for the notice.
This, this is the resolution for the notice for the ten outside.
No, I know, I know that Julie, but I'm talking about the other one, the other ones that are inside that we haven't done yet.
We've noticed all of them.
Okay.
Oh, you mean the ordinance that we have to do for the
Correct.
That we have ordinances to do for the other ones, we've only done ten, we have fifteen more to do for inside the city limits for the amount.
Yeah, there you go.
These ten, this is the last resolution, we'll have ordinances yet, so for everybody.
But you are correct, these are the ones that do sit outside the city limits. There was some question on whether or not we can proceed in this manner, but that's been resolved and we are doing this this way.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No other questions since this ties into the other, do I have a motion to spend the rules on this, proceed to final reading?
Do we have to, no, we just, we don't have.
Oh, it's single reading, excuse me.
The reading, yeah.
We just need a motion then to
Pass it.
Pass result. Twenty twenty day fourteen.
Second, Ivy.
Okay, motion by Mr. Baldinger, second by Mr. Ivy, passes resolution of any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yeah.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
It resolution passed by seven oh vote. Moving on to other business, committee meetings coming up between now and the end of the month. Let's start with Mr. Ivy and the parks. Committee.
We can't hear you, Mr. Ivy.
I'm sorry, yes, tomorrow at seven P M on Zoom.
Parks, okay, the next one then, would you please fire and hell?
Police, fire and health is gonna be this Thursday at seven.
Seven, and then next with Dr. Felner, economic development.
Yes, help me out, Julie.
Okay, it is the, hold on, I gotta open my thing here, hold on, hold on.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, the twentieth.
Twenty. Tuesday.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the last one for this month is finance, Mr. Baldinger.
Yeah, we have a finance meeting Wednesday, the twenty, October the twenty first at seven P M on Zoom.
Okay, thank you, and the other committees who've already held this month. Any other business would like to be brought up for council by the council members?
Um, yes, I'd like to make a shameless plug for the Grace Point. Free Methodist Church is having a free oil changes for single moms. Contact the church office and it's going to be held this coming Saturday in the morning and it's a great benefit to the community, it's just another way that, you know, galleon supports their own, so little shameless plug there, thank you.
Thank you, any other announcements or things to be brought up? Okay, was there, if not, moving on to elected officials reports, first was auditor Trish, he's not here. Did he pass along any information to you, Julie, or the mayor? Or Mr. Palmer?
I didn't get anything.
No, no.
Terms of office update.
Right. Okay. First that president, law director, Mr. Palmer.
Nothing to share tonight, thank you.
Mayor.
Uh, try to go quickly on three items. The relating back to Brian, I, we had had a meeting, I, it seems to me it was Friday of last week. Getting an initial idea of where there might be issues with the budget, talked about revenue overall. My sense of it is that although Brian may be out for a short period of time, I don't see that impacting getting a budget to Gail's committee on the schedule that I think's been generally circulated. As far as the budget goes, I think the biggest issue, it's no longer a complete question mark because we received an initial quote from our health insurance provider. Health insurance costs and and the decision of whether to go out and search the market again after one year are probably the two biggest issues on the spending side of the budget coming into this year. I think everyone, all of us are a little anxious about the revenue. And so well, what will you'll probably see in the first go at it to finance will be some pretty conservative adjustments in revenue increases. So we aren't, the state had recommended a nine percent, they expect to have a nine percent reduction in income tax. We we don't anticipate that, but we aren't expecting any growth. So I could go into more itemized stuff, but I won't. A couple of things that I think are necessary and that we've limped along. Maintaining our water and sewer rates at a, I think, a level that nobody, you know, thinks are are too low, but we've really got to a point where both water and sewer, we're gonna have to follow up on the recovery plan that was, you know, the basis for us being released and I think most everybody was on council, those that weren't in that recovery plan, there was an anticipation of raising water and sewer rates, I think, two years ago. And we've been able to manage to keep that at bay, but I would expect to see some a need to look at greater revenue on both those sides, so Mark's committee had an initial presentation on rates. So I expect that to be moving ahead, those are two budget items. But the schedule, the timing of it, I think we'll be in pretty good shape in terms of not having to pass a temporary, any of those kind of shenanigans. Couple other items, I'll try to go quickly, the, I'm I'm almost I'm superstitious enough to not want to jinx how well the paving project is going. The port, excuse me, the Harding Way project seems to be going real well. Certainly not a merchant up there that was, you know, in the in the main four blocks that was kind of shut down the last couple of days. But by another day or two, weather permitting, certainly, they're gonna have a large part of that uptown area finished. And I think that's a good thing, I won't. I can answer questions, but I won't give you the three minute description of what happened between the square and Boston. But I will say that I'm comfortable about the decision we made. It's a little more expense for the city this year, but eight, nine, maybe ten years from now. Those two blocks would have deteriorated way, you know, two or three years ahead of the other, and I I think council and mayors of those future years would be cursing the idea of of why they leave those two blocks out, so there's some questions we can, you know, discuss that Shelley and Sands was in town. They, if they weren't as much as Boca, the milling, so if you if you ran into them, you know, they were in town and they're milling off and Shelley and Sands the rest of this week and probably early next week will be finishing up that local paving. One more significant change that you'll see is that when we scoped the project, there there was a pretty significant, I believe, two thousand feet of North Market that wasn't let's how we say, re in real bad shape and that was left out of that. When we got out there milling, it's really between what the township did and where we were going to stop. It became pretty obvious that the we needed to extend the project limit, so there'll be a change order on that, less than than what would require council action, but a pretty pretty significant one and I'll try to get that information to you in terms of it, how much it was, it won't require supplemental appropriation to pay for that, you may have to, Gail, your committee may have to do some transfers to get the money into that, into an infrastructure line, so to avoid a question from anyone in the apartments or anyone who uses North Market, you know, why didn't we do that, that that section, we are going to do it and I think we'll all be better off for it, so that's reporting up on the on the roadway projects and yeah, I guess I could, there's a couple other things, I won't, I I won't make it too painful, go on for too long, but those are our two highlights, there may be some other questions.
This is, I've got to concur, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I think they've been, they went really quickly. What I've seen that they've been doing is, you know, been not very painful, you know, they've really been
Yep.
Getting
Thank you, I agree with that, it's almost like complimenting the the painter when they're halfway done with your house, you almost hate to say anything, but it they don't want to be here any longer than they have to and it's it's you know, I it's, I don't, we're getting along with O dot, we'll put it that way.
Yeah.
I think that's real important, we have a huge project with them over the next year and a half, so I'm sorry, Doc.
No, it's okay, I've I've got a front row seat to the action and, you know, for patients that come in and kind of moan about it, I want, I preempt it and go what what a great job and what a pleasure it is to work, to see the machinery and the people just doing the job, you know, like like clockwork, so I I'm happy about that and I just stress that it's gonna be a temporary inconvenience.
Yeah, for sure, thank you.
Besides all the construction work, I think they did a great job of directing traffic and keeping everything moving too. And up there different times been great, so anything else that want to ask of the mayor? If not, I don't have anything with.
I I should say one more thing.
Okay.
It is, if you, please indulge me, tomorrow afternoon, I think it's three thirty or something. I've been included with a handful of other mayors to have a Zoom call or a conference call with the lieutenant governor. What they wanted from the city was a description of how the the COVID has affected us and what they could do about it, basically. And what I related, I think, remains the case in that the the very slow action by the general assembly to get that money to the communities is really putting us in a in a squeeze. And while now you can't do much about it, I hope that the wine in Houston make that a priority because the whatever the size of the next Washington past package of relief, it's gonna come, I don't know what the form will be, but I would sure hope that they would move more quickly in getting local localities their money. So I, you know, you you want to tell them what you think, you don't need to, you know, give them false applause, I, but you don't want to be hypercritical. But I think all of us trying now at this point to figure out a responsible and in in, I guess, I don't know what the right verb, a game plan you can execute over the next ten weeks is, it's real frustrating, so as I said on Monday, now I'll repeat here that we are looking at the details of how we could provide a credit or relief to our utility users, our customers rather. And that may be bureaucratically a little difficult, so we're looking at some other options and among those might be direct relief to businesses. And so those two, if you want to describe them as front running, I think are ways to spend down the money we have, we received a check today somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and sixty five thousand. So if you look at your fund balance report, you see around two seventy, you add that three sixty five to that, that's how much we need to get in the hands of of our local businesses and or local utility customers, you know, kind of, as they say, A S A P, so every other, indulge me one more second, we have called, we've talked to community action, we've talked to the food bank folks. They they're relatively well set for utility relief, they're actually doing some rental relief at community action. And so they are not strapped for funds. And so I I had hoped to maybe have them provide the utility relief, but at this point, it looks like we may be better off to to come up with a way to provide directly a direct credit to the customers. I don't want to issue all of our customers a hundred dollars and then count on them coming in and using that to pay their either past two balance down or to make next month's payment, so anyway, it's there's, it's it's a shame that this late in this calendar year with the with the spending authority going away at the end of the year, we're just now getting it was October fifteenth, we're not just now getting money that Congress provided to Columbus, gosh, I want to say, what was it, April, maybe that first the first big stimulus with the PPP program, that's where this money was was first put in place by Congress and I'm not sure exactly when the state got it, but it's been months ago, so anyways, I'll stop complaining and we're working hard to make sure that that money gets out the door and we don't have a you know, some sort of audit finding that we gave away, let's just say a half a million dollars for for utility relief to find out that we did it the wrong way and I like nerds, don't get me wrong, but some bureaucratic nerd, you know, comes in two years later and says, well, you did this wrong. I really want to do everything we can to avoid that. So no offense to nerd or but that's what will, if we do it wrong, that's what will happen and we'll all be kicking ourselves in the fanny and nobody wants that. So thanks for letting me go on a little bit longer than I thought, but I think it's important.
The only thing I have is a The only thing I have is another compliment to the city for the bike trail. It's certainly good to go by there and see that many, or ten, ten or twelve cars sitting there and all the people walking, really is an asset to the, to the community. And um, people is complimenting on it too about how nice it is. And, uh, so I'd just like to make that kind of, I imagine you, some of you have also heard the same.
Thanks, bro. I think really like the, sometimes you have an eye, it just took forever to get that to work its way through the, the Freeze Foundation, buy the ground, do the swap so that we, you know, arrange things with Levant. So it is pretty neat and it's, uh,
It is.
All age and, and, uh, you see all kinds, you see people of all ages and family sizes out there. It's kind of cool to be out there. Great place to campaign for anybody who's gonna run for office next year. We'll rent you a space out there. You can pass out signs and stuff.
Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Not, it's, uh, it's seven fifty-two. Do I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Triplet?
Make that motion?
Second by Mr. Vodkins, on favor, say aye.
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 Likewise, meeting hereby adjourned at seven fifty-two. Thank you for staying with us, pastor.
Thank you.
Glad to do it. Thanks for the invite.
I hope it